I'm starting to show people right now. Hello, Las Vegas and welcome to the 100 Black Men Meet the Chiefs Town Hall Meeting. I'd like to introduce to you today the President of the 100 Black Men of Las Vegas, Mr. Gentry Richardson. Mr. Richardson, take it away.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. What we do here is periodically, about every six months, we get together with the leaders on law enforcement in our areas to just really give you the opportunity to get to know them and to later on ask them some questions. I've set up a few questions that, to get the conversation going. And what I want to do now is just first of all, start off introducing and thanking the men here that have agreed to be a part of this webinar. And I'm going to ask each of you to just talk about your position and tell us a little bit about yourselves. And I'll start with, I'll start with Deputy Chief Michael Blow.
Yes, good afternoon and thank you, President Richardson. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Deputy Chief Michael Blow. I'm Chief of Field Operations for the Henderson Police Department. I have the, all the patrol districts and the jail under my command. I've been in law enforcement for approximately 34 years. And I started my career back on the East Coast with the Prince George's County Police Department in Maryland. I retired there as Deputy Police Chief, Chief of Patrol Division. Then I was appointed as the Director of Security Services for the Prince George's County Public Schools. And then, as fate would have it, my wife had a tremendous opportunity and we ended up moving here to the Las Vegas metropolitan area. So we're really excited to be here. I'm also a member of the 100 Black Men of Las Vegas, very proud member, and again, very happy to be here. And thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you for that introduction, Deputy Chief Blow. And then we'll move on to, is it correct, Chief Adam Garcia?
Thanks, Gentry. Appreciate you inviting me to this telecast. My name is Adam Garcia. I'm the Vice President, Public Safety Services and Director of University Police, Southern Command. So in my current position, my department provides police service to all Southern Nevada, Nevada System of Higher Education institutions, including UNLV, the College of Southern Nevada, Nevada State College, and the Desert Research Institute. Our patrol area is about 800 square miles. Basically, it covers all of Clark County. We have 81 sworn positions. We have about 160 total employees at University Police Services. My background is that I've been in law enforcement for 43 years. Started out in the Detroit area, where I moved up in my department, left my agency as a lieutenant to become the chief in a suburb of Detroit. While I was there, I was offered a position in Nevada at the University of Nevada Reno as the Police Chief. So I've spent 18 years in Reno and the last three and a half years I have been overseeing the police services in Southern Nevada.
Wow, great. I got some questions for you, for sure. This is a great addition to what we're doing. Now, let me get to Carlos Hank.
Can you hear me, Gentry?
Yes, I can.
Thank you for that gracious introduction, Mr. President. My name is Carlos Hank. I'm a captain with the Las Vegas Metro Police Department. I've served the Las Vegas Metro Police Department for the last 22 years in a variety of capacities. I started my career in detention services as a correction officer, transferred over to the Patrol Division. Spent times in patrol, as a patrol detective, protective sergeant, field training officer, academy staff, and made my way through to Sergeant in the general assignment and then general assignment detectives. And then on way to Lieutenant, I served as a watch commander. That is a position that I think is one of the most critical leadership positions on the department. Because that, we have a watch commander on duty 24 hours a day and that person is responsible for all police actions during, when the sheriff or the deputy chiefs are not on duty. From being a lieutenant and as a watch commander, I went on to Internal Affairs as one of the two lieutenants in Internal Affairs. And from there, I transitioned to Captain, promoted to Captain, and I was the Captain of Bolden Area Command on the Historic West Side of Las Vegas. That awesome opportunity to lead about 190 cops in Bolden, excuse me, about 190 personnel, about 170 cops and detectives. And recently, in September, I was transferred to the Office of Internal Oversight and Constitutional policing, which I am the captain over the organization that investigates all officer-involved shootings, use of force, and in custody deaths. It is a pleasure and honor to be, being able to represent the Las Vegas Metro Police Department. And I too am a member of the 100 Black Men of Las Vegas. And just thank you for this opportunity to engage with you tonight. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. Thank you, Captain Hank. And I just, and I just want to add that Captain Hank is the highest ranking black male in the, in Metro. Is that correct, Captain?
Yeah. Yes, yes, it is. And it's an honor to be one of the, they may be the only captain, but we have some lieutenants in the pipeline that are going to be coming up very soon. One that's working for me, Mr. Kirk McKenzie. He's on the captain's list and he should be joining me in the captain rank here very soon. You know, we got an election coming up for the new sheriff. He's probably going to be elected. And hopefully, we will see a nice, new, robust leadership staff. And I'm encouraged to be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you. And then hopefully, we'll, hopefully, they're not done with you yet. We've got some things coming up in the near future for you, Captain Hank. So I just want to let you know, I'm a big fan. I'm a big fan. I, I, I tell you, one of the things about, there's a lot of great things about the 100, but it is the involvement of leaders in law enforcement that helps give us a perspective. And, and, and we can, and we help in providing a perspective. We'll talk to them. But I, I, I really like where we're going as far as the relationship, as far as understanding challenges. And, and really, to me, it's important to humanize what, what men and women go through in law enforcement. So I got a question I want to start off with. And any of you can jump in, but my first question is, what are some of your big, what are some of the biggest challenges that you're facing this year?
This is Adam. I'll jump in real quick and see if my colleagues feel the same way. Probably the biggest challenge that we have right now, at least in my department, from talking to colleagues across the country, is this inability to hire enough people. So we can't recruit. We're having a difficult time retaining individuals as well. Right now, we have about 25 vacancies in the Department of 80 sworn. So we've got a lot of vacancies. I would say that being able to keep people, and there's a whole plethora of reasons why people are leaving or why they're not being attracted to law enforcement. Part of it is just the social changes that have taken place over the last few years. There's a lot of jobs out there. I mean, you name it, you can get it. And so we're having these difficulties. And of course, when we compete against others like Henderson and Metro, our employees don't, are paid at the same level as they are, nor are the benefits the same. So many folks can go shopping for the best position. And I see that this is probably going to be an issue for at least the next five years, maybe beyond that. So I would urge Gentry, if you're available and want a job, please come and apply. I would urge anybody out there who's interested to contact me. Yeah, and we'll, we'll hook them up. We'll send them to the police academy. We'll do whatever we need to do to hire folks. And of course, top of my list is making sure that my department reflects the community that we serve in terms of gender, in terms of race, ethnicity, and other areas as well.
Okay. Um, and, and obviously, what type of outreach do you have? When you look at these openings, are there, is there, is there any outreach into the community? How do we find out about these types of opportunities and what it would take to, to even qualify for, for this type of position?
Yeah, for, so for UPD's outreach, we do job fairs. We have folks going out to community events to try to be seen, to try to be involved in the community, of course. In our department, our foundational basis for policing is community-oriented policing. So we strive to attempt to reach out in every manner that we can. And of course, I'm open to ideas. If anybody has any, if you do, Gentry, or others, any of the group of the 100 Black Men of Las Vegas, be glad to hear them. We'll come to churches. We'll go wherever we need to go to cultivate this new future of the face of Nevada's law enforcement.
Great, great. So yes, we will, we'll definitely follow up. We do have a job fair coming up and even talk about some of the things that we're doing with the youth and, and how we can get them aware and, and hopefully interested in this opportunity. And I understand it is a challenge and that's for many reasons and things we have to deal with. Captain Hank, what would you say some of your, some of your biggest challenges are?
Well, obviously staffing is, is, has impacted the country. The social movement has, law enforcement is not seen as the preferred career path of our young, young people at this particular time. I think it's, it's a challenge for us to change your mind. So the issue, in my opinion, is relationship building. As we need to continually strive to build those relationships in the community and restore the trust of the community. We've had the incident with the, you know, especially, I would say, with the situation with George Floyd. You know, the law enforcement has lost its luster based upon the actions of a few bad apples. And unfortunately, it has caused a lot of, a lot of police agencies to lose applicants because of the social times we live in right now. And people just see other opportunities to make, you know, good money and they don't see law enforcement as a viable career. But also, in addition to that, another issue is, right now, we are seeing, we have, we've had a spike in violent crime. And we need to address that. We are, we're seeing a spike in stolen vehicles. We need to address that. So there are other areas in crime that are plaguing us. But I see the biggest issue is restoring the public trust in law enforcement to the degree that allows us to continue to cultivate and bring in the new blood that we need to our agencies.
Okay. It's interesting that there is a spike in crime. And it's interesting, and that, and the fact that it's stolen, stolen vehicles is one of the basic, I think that's something that, that we all in the community need to be aware of and be out on the lookout for. Is it more stolen vehicles that with no one in the car? Or are you seeing any incidents of like carjackings or anything like that?
Well, on the, I would say out of California, you're seeing some of the follow-me-home bandits. So these are folks that are following folks home, you know, in your high-end luxury cars. They're following them home and those folks are a little, are not aware of the, them being tracked by this predator and they follow them home, follow them to their house. And then once they get out of their car, they basically carjack them. Or you're seeing some of the older vehicles, you know, like a lot of your older, like Chevy trucks, F-150s and alike, F-250s, your large heavy-duty Silverados and things like that. And then also, we're seeing a spike in catalytic converter theft. So you know, those are, those are things that are occurring. What I encourage people to do is, one, if you have a garage, park your car in your garage. Two, do some type of preventative serialization on your catalytic converter. And three, if you don't have cameras, sign up for, Metro has a, has a camera program where you could sign up and say that you have a camera in your neighborhood, whether it be a ring doorbell or security on your house. The, the, our, you sign up on our website and we will know that you have a camera there. So if a crime happens in your community, we could go to your house and say, hey, during this time, does your cameras capture anything? It's not something that we're going to be monitoring, but it lets us know where those cameras are so that we can efficiently get out there and track those people down in an efficient manner to, to take them into custody and find and track, track those perpetrators.
Okay, okay. Deputy Chief Blow?
Well, we've got a couple of challenges. One of the challenges that I see is that I think metro-wide, President Richardson, we don't have a deep bench. And I think part of that is, is some of the shortcomings that we're seeing from the school system with the young people not being prepared for some of the standardized tests and also some of the tests that are offered by the various agencies, whether it's fire department, the feds, or Metro, or our department. And that certainly creates challenges, particularly for some of the members of minority community who are not prepared for those types of testing mechanisms. Therefore, we're having to recruit heavily outside of the area looking for certain types of talent. And when we would really like to build a bench with homegrown talent. So that's, that's one of the challenges. One of the other challenges that we see, at least from Henderson's perspective, we've seen an increase in suicides. We've also seen an increase in mental health incidents throughout the last year and also an increase in assaults. And the assaults that we're finding are normally between people that know each other. We've had assaults between family members over a slice of pizza. You know, those types of things where, you know, you look at these things and say, well, how could we have prevented those types of situations? And of course, we, we have victim advocates and we put information out to, to share with the community, resources that they can use if they're having difficulty in the family structure and the like. And we certainly hope that more people will take advantage of that. But that's certainly something that we're seeing along with some of the other trends that Captain Hank, Hank was pointing out. We too were seeing spikes in thefts of catalytic converters. But our, our other challenges around automobiles have been actual thefts from automobiles. And if I could also ask the audience, or if you have a friend, when you go into the various shopping centers or to particularly the athletic clubs, please take your valuables, either take them with you and lock them up in the club or lock them in the truck or just don't bring it. If you're not going to need your computer, don't take it to the athletic club and leave it on the front seat of your car. You know, that's just, and then leave the door unlocked. You know, you're just kind of inviting someone to come by and take the opportunity to remove some of your valuables. So some of these things we're seeing can be prevented. Others, we know, you just have some bad seeds in the community and they're going to do things regardless of some of the preventive measures that you put up. But those are some of the challenges that, that I'm seeing and that we're seeing as an agency.
So would you say that a lot of the, the crime is being driven by the economy? For instance, we're looking at cars being stolen. Obviously, that's for parts and it's probably could be due to supply chain issues and, and things like that. So is it, is it, is it the economy and is it an illegal, illegal way to deal with supply and, and demand?
I, I think it's a combination. I think some are just crimes of opportunity. Some of the people that we've arrested and debriefed and done follow-up investigations, they've been stealing as part of organized theft rings. And others have been just folks trying to, to make a dollar so that they can buy a loaf of bread. So we, we certainly found, found rather, that our, our analysis has sort of taken on sort of an octopus fashion where the tentacles have reached out to different types of criteria.
Okay. All right.
If I could add on that, President. So like the Chief Blow said, the, it runs the gamut on the types of crimes and the people who are committing the crimes. So you want it, we call it target hardening or you want to make yourself less of an opportunity, less of a target to be a victim. So you know, you look at the crime triangle, you have the victim, you have the suspect, and you have the opportunity. If you can remove one of those, then you can remove the chance that you're going to become a victim of crime. So we initiate things like the Take Lock and Hide program. We post them up at, at a lot of your LVACs, 24 Hour Fitness, the malls and things like that. But it's incumbent upon us as citizens to take those preventive measures to adhere to those types of programs. And, and, and the truth about it is, you debrief these folks, just like the chief said, they are looking for that soft target. They are looking for those people that are loot. They're looking for those people that are leaving iPad. They're leaving a MacBook Pro in the car. They're looking for those, those folks that are not hiding things away.
Okay. Next question. How would you rate your organization in diversity from a scale of one to five? And I'll start off with you. Is it, is it goes against a Vice President Garcia or Chief Garcia? What do you prefer? And you're on mute.
Chief Garcia is fine. I appreciate that.
What is it?
Chief Garcia.
Great, great. Okay, Chief, Chief Garcia.
Well, it's dismal, right? So we, we, we have about a 25% rate when it comes to, you know, how our department is reflective of the community that we serve. And of course, at this point, we are having a very, very difficult time, as I said earlier, in our recruiting and retention of folks. So you know, when we have these kinds of issues, it's difficult to bring people in. And I think that Michael had brought up this idea that many folks are not prepared to take the kind of, prepared for the law enforcement field in terms of testing, you know, from the point that we recruit somebody to the time they actually hired, we're talking about a six-month period. In that six-month period of time, they have to pass physical agility tests, written tests, polygraphs, medicals, physicals. So there's a whole host of things that have to happen between the time of application and the time they're actually hired. And then they go to a police academy for 22 weeks and then come back out of the police academy, do basically on-the-job field training officer type of programs. And that's another 16 weeks that is added onto that. And so there's a lot of preparation that has to take place from the individual themselves. We will train you to be a police officer, but you have to get through that door and you have to get through that your four to six-month period of time. And you're in a constant training or constant application process. So we are having a difficult time in getting folks from any area of our society who can pass all of those barrier testing that takes place, if that makes sense.
Wow, wow. Yeah, it just seems like enough people have done it, so we know it can be done. It's, it's, it's a matter, once again, it looks to me like it's also a matter of outreach and, and prepping. I know, and when in Los Angeles and I had a, I had a nephew that was interested and then, and of course, they, they literally had a situation where there were officers that would, they had a group of officers and they, and they were, and their goal was to help men that, you know, age and every, the proper age and everything else to qualify. They had camps to get together, where they could come, get together on weekends and help them get their agility together and show them the types, types of deals that, you know, their times, everything, the things they had to prepare for and get in shape and all that. And really try to help them understand what it was, it was they, you know, I mean, they identified them and they're working with them, so they knew who, you know, they had a good people who they're dealing with. And it's kind of like what, you know, Deputy, Deputy Chief Blow was saying. It was like trying to do something as far as homegrown out of the community and training them and getting them ready for when they go in and do that. Are those, is that something that's realistic? Or is this, is that something that's very, very unique that you see? Is that, is it possible to have it where you have a group of officers or men in the force that say, okay, now, we're gonna, we're gonna help prepare youth to come into this type of job and get, you know, help them get ready?
So President Gentry, Carlos Hank here. So we have a few different mechanisms in place in order to develop youth. We have our We have our cadet program, we have our explorer program. Our explorer program, um I I believe those kids are from fourteen to seventeen. Then our cadet programs from eighteen to twenty. And then once they turn twenty-one, they automatically get in uh pushed into a uh, they earn the right to go into a police academy. So we do have those programs uh to mentor and guide youth to uh the police department. Um uh you, the the initial question was about diversity, so I'd just like to run through some numbers for you. So um as an agency, we have approximately five thousand six hundred fifty-eight permanent employees on Metro. Of those, we have five hundred and fifty-two that are black, three hundred and fifty-seven that are Asian. Um thirty-three that are Asian, uh Alaska native. Um and eleven hundred ninety-three which are Hispanic and uh three thousand one hundred twenty-six that are uh white and have not of Hispanic heritage. So uh you say you wanted to rate our agency. I, one, one, one thing, the way I look at it is like, I have to rate my agency for what it's trying to do. It's trying to be a diverse agency. It is. It 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 truly is. Um and it is making some steps. Our, we have an excellent recruiting team. We have a Sheriff's African-American Recruitment Council that is very active. A Asian Recruitment Council, ALBGTQ Recruitment Council. We have the, it it goes the full gamut of different specialized groups of minority groups for our agency to where we're reaching out every time there's a community event or every time there's a recruiting event. We're there, we're present, letting them see someone like them. So hopefully, they will be inspired in order to come alongside us and become uh police officers. But in addition to that, we've partnered with um uh uh some HBCUs. Um and I believe that our uh recruiting team will be heading out and taking our testing on the road. They've been out to California and I know they're going back east uh later this year um to take uh the metro. Um you know, mantle out there and 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 we've also done some advertising with billboards and things like that in other areas to try to drum up uh recruitment efforts. Uh and specifically in areas where there are um, you know, minorities so that we can increase our minority uh makeup.
Okay, so again, do you think it comes down to a trust issue?
I, I think.
Doing a lot, it sounds like you're doing a lot out there, so.
Yes, and I I I I like I said, uh from the beginning, uh I believe that it is, we have to repair. Um it's not just our police agency, it's across the country. So you look at something that was, I mean, we used to have a cashman field. We would advertise for law enforcement, Metro's testing. And we will have a line out there that we would have to cut off and say, hey, you can't test today. We don't have that anymore. So we have to look at ourselves, how we market ourselves, how we market our profession, how we engage in and how we're communicating, and how we're packaging our um our profession and how we're trying to, you know, lure people to it. But also, we have to keep it honorable, we have to keep it clean. Because I believe the social justice uh influence is very strong. And I believe that that has a lot to do with whether or not people want to commit to doing a a uh a profession like law enforcement.
Okay. Um uh Deputy Chief Blow, how would you rate?
Uh we, from a scale of one to five, uh President Richardson, I'd have to say we're a strong one point five. Uh we are, we we're certainly uh as uh.
That's not, that's not that one point five.
Yeah, um well, it's no secret, we, for example, we have two black females uh uh on our agency. Uh and certainly that that doesn't reflect the community that we serve. Uh I can't tell you that Chief Andre, this is uh he's given Kathy Kirkmore, who was over our recruiting and and training efforts. Um the go-ahead to do some some revamping of that effort and he has begun that process. And uh you know, we are now, you know, in our last uh academy class, you know, we've been able to graduate more minority officers and and so forth. But we have a long way to go. Uh we historically have not recruited at historically black colleges and universities. Uh and and so now we're sort of playing catch-up and trying to um to get to places and get information to places where we will be more successful at attracting uh qualified uh candidates from uh various backgrounds and 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 so forth. Um and and we too have, you know, problems now. We have PAL and our training program in in the, some of the fifth grade uh schools throughout the the city and our sports program and other things that we're trying to reach out to to young people. But we have to make a concentrated effort and we are doing that uh to reach out so that we can uh get uh more qualified applicants. And I do have to agree that um we are facing the challenges over the past several years of some of the incidents that have happened. Uh you know, agencies across the country, not only they having challenges with recruiting people, but uh some of my colleagues back east in Baltimore and Detroit and other places, they're saying it's also hurt their ability to close cases. Because the community will not even come forward and bring information uh to help close cases in the community because of the lack of trust uh that has developed as a result of some of those instances. But I I I do have confidence that these obstacles are not insurmountable, that we will be able to uh correct these uh situations over time. And it's gonna take a lot of effort and we're committed to doing what it takes uh to make those changes.
Okay, okay, my, I, I, yeah. I I know that uh uh Chief Andres is 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 committed. Uh it's interesting that I that I look across and we have uh uh black police chief in Henderson. And now we have a black uh uh I believe female chief, yeah, a female chief in North Las Vegas. And it just seems like, just from a diversity perspective. A lot of times, even if there's some, eh even if there are, there's some desire at the top. There are some, so some things, you're still dealing with a system and there's blocks that can be blocks there as you try to make change. And um I think part of that is a a lack of, I think, a lack of 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 diversity types of training and and uh within, within the organization. Uh would you say that uh that you have, that you are training individuals within the force in diversity and and equity and diversity? Are they going through some some trainings and allied trainings and those kinds of things to to kind of, to really help and heighten the awareness?
Well, absolutely. I mean, we have uh diversity training in our in-service training. We have diversity training as part of the recruit level training. The command staff goes to diversity training. Uh we, you know, we have a host of of opportunities uh for uh recognizing diversity. But not only just recognizing the president vision, but appreciating it and understanding the the opportunities and the benefits of diversity. And also recognizing that not just diversity in terms of skin tone and but diversity in thought, uh diversity in thinking, all of these things are important to an agency if they truly want to be uh inclusive and and be better servants of the people.
Yeah, what are, what are your, what are your guys' thoughts?
I would, I would echo that um um, you know, uh with the, you know, there was a similar bill, four seventy-eight that was uh passed through um recently that required that uh police agencies provide their officers with twelve additional hours in areas of racial profiling, mental health, uh develop that uh is developmental disability, implicit bias and de-escalation firearms and things like that. Um but these are things that the Las Vegas Metro Police Department has been doing for years. And um we've, we've been doing, they've been on the forefront of it. And I know other agencies, Henderson, North Las Vegas and uh other agencies have similar programs. Um and I think in Southern Nevada, you'll find that we find, we have very progressive agencies that are out there and trying to be inclusive. I mean, we just graduated uh a police academy with six black officers. A officer that uh his religion is a Sikh. So he has the head turban, he has the beard. We are looking to be more inclusive. We are looking to be more uh open to change. And the days of um uh being, have, having this this certain look of an officer, I think that that is behind us. We have to look at our, we have to look at the the uh the 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 citizenry, the the population that we have to choose from. And we have to get the best qualified applicant that's gonna go out there and do the best job uh possible to serve our community within the guidelines of our of our agency. And I believe if they're not morally corrupt, if they're not breaking laws and things like that, we have to look at ways to be more inclusive. I do know that uh, you know, the uh we have to hold our officers accountable. But the eh eh what I, what I mean by that is, um you know, you you, we can't overlook a bad uh so a bad apple. We have to take action on that and possibly separate that subject from uh that that person from our agency. If they're doing things counter to the productive, counter to the 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 goals and the mission uh of our loss, of the Las Vegas Metro Police Department and um in law enforcement, period. Because one bad apple has a ripple effect on all police agencies around the country. You look at the situation with George Floyd, it's a, in my opinion, it's a watershed move. I think we've seen more problems since then. When we have those, it's like, it's a turnoff. And until we can rekindle that relationship, rekindle that trust, we're gonna continue to have these issues of recruiting and and people trusting us uh uh to come into their house and police them. We gain our, we gain our power from the people and we must do everything we can on every opportunity we meet them. Every opportunity to restore that public trust. I think that's the way we turn this around and make law enforcement a better uh 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 sought-after career again.
But are you, are you taking the officers through a formal training? A formal diversity training?
Yeah, so we have it uh recognize implicit bias training. We have racial profiling training. We, you get, they get the training from in the academy, they have follow-on training. Every area of our uh agency, whether it be communications, whether it be um you know, whatever the the department of, excuse me, the Detention Services Division, doesn't matter. That training is interwoven into the makeup of our training cycle.
Okay, um uh who else is doing that? Who's doing, who else has formal training?
Well, it's so uh we are as well with University Police Services and and I think both Hank and Carlos and and Michael will tell you that there are requirements that post requires us to train in these very subjects. So every police officer across the board receives this kind of training, just like my sister agencies or brother agencies. We, on top of that, we do additional training, not only through the police academy, but through in-service training throughout the career of the officer. There uh, you know, but having said that, um from my perspective, and I agree with what's been said about the George Floyd thing. That was outright murder. That's not who we are, that's not who we should be. It it is not acceptable to any police officer worth a a grain of salt across this country. But I will tell you, it's not just the training, it's also a cultural shift. A change from who we were at some time in the history of policing to who we should be and how we engage with our community. So I, from my perspective in my department, uh we look at cultural change and cultural shift, how people think. And it begins when, who we hire. And it continues on, how do we train them in a police academy in that that uh format? And then are we holding, holding them accountable later? And I think that Carlos has talked about the the plethora of problems that have seemingly come out. The reality of it is we're policing ourselves much better than we did before.
Okay, so let me ask you this, because I mean, we say that the training's happening, we have some of the same challenges. When is, how's the community involved in this training? So so when you're training the officers, uh is this, I I I, how do you, how do, how are you having like representatives of the community involved in a training, do parts of the training, interact with your force? Is there, is there any object, are there any objectives like that?
So uh yes, and I would like to just add uh President, that the you know, just some of the, some of the classes that we teach, fair and impartial policing, procedural justice. Um the initial training, then we have the follow-on uh for our cour- course of that. And then we have implicit bias and recognition. Uh we have that both electronically and in person, ethics values and professionalism. Um all of those types of training elements are are um are put together so that we can cover all aspects. And and you know, we get, we're drawing people from all around the United States and they all have different types of belief systems. And they've grown up in different areas and may not have seen some of the people they've seen here in Las Vegas. We have a very diverse community here. We're trying to expose them uh as best as possible to as much fair and impartial uh instruction. So they will go out there and they will embody the goals and the uh 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 the values that is embodied by our police department. And you say, you asking about if we have community members. We have the Multicultural Advisory Committee on Metro. That committee has helped redefine our fair and impartial policing plan, our use of force plan. And then you also know Mujahid Ramadan. He covers a community communications uh class where we bring him in and his company. And he talks to our, to our officers also. And we also have at the, at the level of the academy, we have members of the of the uh of the community come in and speak to our academy, very diverse members of of, you know, from the LBGTQ community, all different types of uh from different people from different parts of different backgrounds to expose those officers and for them to understand. Uh you know, right from the get-go, hey, you're gonna be dealing with a very diverse community. And it's up to you to uh to embody our values and go out there and police fair, firm and consistently.
That is, that's, 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 that's good stuff right there. What uh uh Deputy Chief Blow, what about you guys? I know you have some community, you have some, some community things going on.
Yes, sir. As you know, we have our Citizens Advisory Council also that um it's relatively new, it's about uh six months old, but that uh and it is reflective of the greater Henderson community, so we're very excited about that. And they're actually uh going to be part of helping us to develop uh some upcoming training, uh particularly uh some strategies for, some additional strategies for uh community engagement. Uh but again, as I said earlier, um we have been doing diversity training uh for for quite a few years now. Uh at at every level of the department, uh not just the squad staff, but the professional staff as well. So every member of the agency uh has been exposed to the training and the training. Not only is is it uh looking at some of the theoretical applications, but it's uh, it's full of of scenarios and and other types of engaging activities so that you actually have to really participate if you're going to successfully complete it. And so uh we're, we're going to continue uh down that road with those types of activities.
How about you, Chief Garcia? As far as community involvement and uh it really just uh, just uh uh having them involved to help improve eh the the community relations, the um just the 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 type of diversity, equity, types of training perspective of your, of your officers. Uh do you have individuals outside of committee committees outside? I understand you have a lot of campuses and you probably see a whole lot of different kinds of things. Um but how do you involve the community?
Uh yes, uh Mr. President, you're absolutely right. We're, we're, you know, our policing is fairly unique to to what we do and to the communities that we serve. We do have a police advisory board that covers all four campuses that uh that uh we serve. And so we have members of of those four campuses on the police advisory board, which also includes students, uh includes uh folks from the community, uh faculty and staff as well as some administrators. So we kind of get, get kind of our support and information from the community through that police advisory board. One of the things that's happened over the last uh six months is the the uh police academy, which was previously run by the city of North Las Vegas, has now been moved under University Police Services. So I'm responsible for the training that takes place at the police academy. And so we're in the process of totally revamping uh the the training that we uh provide to recruits. And it's a regional academy, so we have, uh right now, we have six other law enforcement agencies that are sending recruits to our, to to the uh police academy at the College of Southern Nevada. And we are currently in the process of revamping the entire training process and looking at different models uh in which uh, in which we are going to include, much like uh, Carlos had indicated a few minutes ago, bring in members of the community to engage with these new recruits, to get that different and fresh perspective. We don't always want cops teaching cops, even though that's very important. We also want them to hear from different segments of the communities that, that we serve. And we are looking at a, a model in Washington DC in which they uh, choose folks from the high schools and use the high schools as a feeder program into uh, uh, into the policing world. So that when they reach the appropriate age, then, then they can move on to the police academy and become members of law enforcement. So that feeder program is a long program, but we're looking at some kind of a model uh, that would be appropriate in, in, for what it is that we're trying to accomplish in order to make those changes that are necessary for us.
Great. So I have one more question, but and while, and while we uh, cover this question, I'm going to ask anyone that has questions out there to uh, to, to um, to type them in to the Q and A. And uh, I'll, I'll share some of those questions as, at the end. Uh, the next question I have is, uh, how can we help? How can we help with this effort? What can we do? Um, because it sounds like a lot of work's been done on, on your side. What, what can we do to help with this?
Well, certainly uh, participating in some of the programs that we have. I know we are about to engage in some activities uh, in, in one of our challenged areas in, on the east side of the city. Um, I, I think that hearing from members of the 100, encouraging members of the community because the 100 does some amazing things around mentoring and encouraging uh, some of the people that you're mentoring to consider careers in law enforcement. And, and I think one of the other things that we sort of have to, to um, to get out to the general public is that a law enforcement career is not just uh, wearing a badge and a gun. Uh, we have, we have forensic folks, we have victim advocates, we have trainers, we have all kinds of incredible opportunities within the field of law enforcement that helps us with that ultimate goal of keeping our community safe. So if you can get that, that message out uh, as well. If you are aware, I mean, I know there are members of the 100 who are, who are members of Tennessee State Alumni and Morgan State Alumni and all these other things. And, and as you become aware of their, of their um, career days and other opportunities that we can uh, be engaged in those types of activity, or, or even if you hear it's coming up, that, you know, that way that we may be able to get in on, on those things on the ground floor. So there's a, a lot of different things that the 100 can do to help us as ambassadors in terms of getting the message out and encouraging uh, people to uh, you know, consider law enforcement, but also encourage the people to participate in, for example, in our citizens' uh, police academies, in our citizens advisory councils and some of the other programming that we have. Or, you know, or allowing us to post some of the activities that we're doing around our PAL leagues or our explorers posts and other things on your website. So again, your constituents can actually see some of those activities and perhaps consider uh, participating in those events as well. So there's a lot of things that the 100 can do and I certainly hope those are things that the 100 will consider uh, as they move forward.
And, and I, and I think that's an opportunity for us. I think that's an opportunity for other organizations in the community where we, where we uh, where we do work closely with, with the force and look at some of these, look at the programs that are out there and how we can, how we can uh, together um, drive more involvement. So um, what about, what about uh, you, Cap, Captain Hank?
Well, um, can we, how can we help? You can help by one, getting the word out. Um, follow us on social media. Uh, you know, partnering with us. We have the Office of the, uh, Office of Community Engagement. Partner with them, uh, because we have tons of agencies that we partner with and it's like, what, you know, you know, sometimes it's so much stuff, it's overwhelming. But when you have organization like the 100 that we can partner with and a little bit from you and a little bit from somewhere else, we're now able to touch so many more people and, and get our word out there. Um, um, and, and, and it's almost like it's omnidirectional. Uh, Chief Blow hit on a, on a, on a very part, uh, on a part that is very dear to my heart and it's called Citizens Police Academy. The Citizens Police Academy is one of, one of the biggest things I feel that people can get involved in. And you say, what can you do? I would like to see a member of the 100 go to the Citizens Police Academy. Have the opportunity to go through the academy and see what it's all about. You know, we put people through, we put some members of the ACLU through, we put some people uh, through the, the media members and things like that. And, but we get regular citizens that, hey, you know what? I want to, I'm more curious about law enforcement. And they come out the other side like, wow, I had no idea. And, you know, I wish we had the opportunity, we could put on, you know, hundreds, but um, you know, we still have them. And I believe that that level of engagement is critical. But I think the social media aspect is something that we have not tapped into enough, whether it be on Twitter, whether it be on Instagram, Facebook or what have, whatever the case may be. Partner with us and engage when we have in the, you know, the, the Cops with Curls event. Does you know what Cops with Curls is? Cops with Curls is the event that they had at Golden Area Command where we bring young girls and pair them with, 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 with cops, uh, young, uh, middle, middle, middle school young ladies. And we basically roll out the red carpet. Uh, there is basically like their first prom. The cops are in their uniform, they escort them down. And, you know, we, 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 we have their families there. We engage with them, we dance with them, we eat with them. It's a, it's a great time and, and we show these young ladies an awesome time to give them the self-worth and, and show them that that's how they should be treated as a young lady. Uh, and we have uh, Eastern, uh, Eastern 106, uh, uh, Santa Ana 106, um, the uh, trunk or treat events. Be present for those and get the word out about you and show your partnering with us. And I think that we could, you know, we can expand this, uh, and I'm glad that the LVMVP Foundation has sponsored a table for the uh, 100 Black Men Gala. Uh, so if these are the agencies that are, that, that are on this, if they have not done so, Chief Blow, uh, you, you might want to step up and do that, but we have one, that's just a little child, Chief. Uh, but we have, we have a table and uh, I, I, I think that this, this is a start of a, a great partnership. And uh, you know, continue to partner with us, continue to get the word out. And anything that you have, any program that you have where you're going to have children there, that law enforcement would be appropriate, ask us to come along and we'll do what we can to, to supply those officers for that engagement.
Right. What's, what's the age for the Citizens Police Academy?
I don't think there's an age limit. It's, it's, I don't think there's an age limit on the Citizens Police Academy, other than I, I think you have to be an adult. You have to be 18 or older.
18 or older, okay.
Yeah, you could go, you can go to lvmpd.com. And if you're in the, if, if you're listening to this and you're interested in, in, in a job for uh, in, in law enforcement or career in law enforcement, like Chief Blow said, we have a plethora of, of different occupations, administrative, uh, crime analysis. Uh, you know, uh, just, uh, you know, information technologies. We have a plethora of, 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 of opportunities for young people to come in, not necessarily to tote a gun or, or, or have that, that area, uh, uh, you know, be, be in that area of law enforcement. But you can contribute to the law enforcement effort in many different ways. Our citizens, excuse me, our civilian staff is very important to the success of our agency, very important. So I encourage you to go to lvmpd.com or protectacity.com to check out any, uh, all of the job postings. And you can put in a interest card when a position will come available with the public information officers. But there's just tons of information out there, uh, tons of jobs out there that, that uh, our, our, our citizens could join with us and be a part of the uh, um, you know, law enforcement community here in Southern Nevada.
Okay. I really like that Citizens Police Academy and maybe getting key people to go through some type of program like that. Because then they can, they, they will, you, 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 you have more voices out there. Uh, so that's, that's something I'd tell you, I'm, I'm going to find somebody in 100 that I can talk into, to uh, become a part of that and hopefully some of the listeners out there will do the same. And uh, uh, Chief Garcia, how can we help you?
Well, we look for every opportunity we can to engage with the community. And so uh, there's a couple of things I'd like to, to say. AJ, you posted a, a question there about love is the answer and absolutely AJ. Um, yeah, I, I posted my email address, adam.garcia@unlv.edu. Get ahold of me, we'll be glad to take part in any, any uh, anything that you have that's going on. I would, uh, Mr. President, I would tell you that um, help us uh, in, in our recruitment drive, uh, so that we can bring folks from the community onboard to our department. I ask folks that are listening or you to, uh, to push out www.unlv.edu and go to the police services webpage. We are Nevada's future. That's who we're protecting. And so as we move forward over the next few years, diversity in our department is important to me. I think reflecting the community that we serve is important to me. And so I ask you to help us fill those ranks with the people who are going to be protecting our future.
Okay, okay. So now I've got a couple of questions. One is, um, how are the psych evals for entry of law enforcement being reviewed? Uh, taking into consideration the modern day social and pandemic challenges? Have, have they, have they been adjusted, taken in, considerate, taken that in consideration?
I don't, I don't uh, know of any differences to our uh, psych, uh, psychological evaluation. I, I will say this, uh, the psychological evaluation for uh, Metro is very extensive, very extensive. So every candidate uh, has to take a psychological test. And uh, then they have to see a psychologist. Uh, they fill out a very extensive background uh, about their psychological stability. And they are evaluated by that psychologist. Is it a hundred percent? Um, you know, is it a hundred percent? And I would say, no, it's not because we've had, we have had some issues. But I would say going forward, our, uh, we have a couple of candidates out there in, uh, that are, that are running for sheriff that have touted some uh, some uh, changes that they would like to make. And one of them is the um, you know, Wellness Bureau. Uh, officers see the most heinous things on a daily basis that you wouldn't want to see. It's just unnatural to see bodies contorted from car accidents or someone taking their life and things like that. They see this every day. So uh, the uh, uh, restoration and the, the understanding and, 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 and commitment to ensure that that person goes back to their family whole and in one piece and, and, and has a, that they have, uh, are, are mentally stable is important to the police department because we want them to have a long illustrious career with us. Uh, but it is true, we have some challenges ahead of us that I believe that are unrealized that this pandemic has placed upon us. And that, you know, we have a, what we call Pete Police Assistance League, so the, uh, 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 Police Assistance Program that officers can reach out. We have a very, very robust chaplain program. Every area command has a chaplain, every bureau has a chaplain responsible for it. And they, we have great relationships with our chaplains to where they are able to uh, come in and uh, speak with officers. In our headquarters building, we have also established a chaplain room, a quiet room. So if officers having a bad day, at least a time off, they need to be, they need to be still be quiet for a moment, we have that room available to the officers 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Um, but in addition to that, uh, I think the question is very valid. And it's something we need to look at going forward as we uh, go through this pandemic cycle. And uh, the well-being of our offices is, is paramount because those are the people that are going, going to go out there and stand between um, the citizens of the community and those that wish to do harm. So their, their, their psychological well-being is uh, should be paramount and we should pay more attention to it.
Okay, a couple more questions. Another one is, what are some of the positive things we can show young people in reference to the police department in their respective communities?
Well, we can show them a variety of things. Um, certainly there are those opportunities, as we alluded to earlier, when they see the interaction of to start with some of the specialized programming with PAL, with the explorers, with Dream Program, all those other types of, of engagement opportunities that officers are involved with uh, throughout the year. Uh, other, other things, you know, for example, at Christmas time when officers are out, you know, doing things at Christmas and Thanksgiving and, you know, in those special time of the year. But also, I think just, uh, again, when, when we're talking about those opportunities for engagement where the officer, where the community is able to engage with their officers and we can't say it enough, this is your police department, you know what I mean? And I think that every opportunity that you have, whether it's the Citizens Police Academy or doing a ride-along or just going up to the station and just introducing yourself, you'll be able to see a lot of positive interaction, just seeing officers going about their daily uh, routine, you know, doing amazing things every day. Now, have, we had some situations where we've had some folk who have tarnished the badge and tarnished the thing we, we've been trying to do. Absolutely. And you, you know, we're not even going to sit here and make any excuses for poor quality service because there are none. But what I will tell you is that, um, I think taking some of that low hanging fruit, uh, going up to the station, riding along, participating in our programs. Um, social media, we have a lot of things on social media where officers are doing everything from playing basketball to taking kids who are arrested, taking a young man who's arrested for shoplifting, paying for his shoes and then taking them to go shopping because they found out that his mom was just laid off. They don't have anything in the house, including electricity. You know, those things happen frequently in the agency. And I think those are some of the things that I think if people were aware of, um, they would say, wow, I didn't know. Because we see the bad things very quickly in this day of CNN and, and MSNBC and Fox and Twitter and Twitter and all the other things that are out here. But I, I think that those are just a few of the low hanging opportunities that, uh, that would allow our citizens to see the good work that's going on in their police departments. And I'm talking about Valleywide, even though, e- even Metro, even though we just got challenged about coming to the dance. They're doing great things there as well.
And, and uh, Captain Hank, I tell you, I will tell you that uh, Michael has uh, uh, W Chief Blow has said that they're stepping up to that, although I haven't seen the check yet, but that's okay. Um, so anyway, uh, for the gala, so we're, we're excited about all of you guys' involvement. Uh, and I, and I, and, and it is that, you know, when you see some, see, you see more bad things than good. And there's so many good things that, that happen, but it, it's like you say, it takes, I tell you, it's, it's like you can do, you can do 10 good things and it just takes one thing to just eliminate all the good you've done. And, and, and I think, I think I, I, I've been through that and I'm not a part of the police department. So uh, it, it's just, it's just, you, it, you gotta, that consistency is so important. And I, and I had a question about are you, are you interested, departments essentially, in being involved with community, community projects on an ongoing basis? Um, this is beyond communities, committees and councils. And I'm going to take that for AJ Ali, I'd say just contact, uh, I, uh, you can just reach out and let, let us know and we'll pass it on, what it is you're talking, that you're, what type of projects you're talking about. Or uh, is there, are there, is there any other ways that the community can uh, get in contact just to present programs that may be of interest for uh, police departments or officers to be involved in?
Well, for Metro, we can, they can contact the Office of Community Engagement. The Office of Community Engagement was designed specifically to bring uh, the law enforcement, Metro, together with the community. So they can go, uh, they can call uh, eight two eight three one one one, ask for the Office of Community Engagement. Someone will contact them. Uh, they can go, I believe on opposite web, uh, on lvp.com. Go to that Bureau's page, Office of Community Engagement's page. I believe you can also follow them on um, on their different social medias and, and, and connect with them that way also. Um, so we're trying to reach out in many different ways and trying, we're, we're trying to come into, you know, this uh, this new social media age and provide opportunity of, of engagement uh, and, and in any, in many different facets. And I believe that uh, you know, Metro still has some growing to do. So if you have some ideas, I'm soliciting to you, those of you that are on here that are listening to us. I'm soliciting to you, those of you that are on here that are listening to us. Um, if you have some ideas of how we can get better, you know, uh, you can, uh, as I, as I said, call the Office of the Community Engagement, you can call recruiting, you can call different, different areas of our department and say, hey, you know, and, and again, you can, uh, you can email me, uh, at the, uh, at, uh, C, uh, six eight eight six H at L V M P D dot com. And, uh, you can email me and I'll forward them to the, uh, to those locations. We're committed to getting better and all the way we can get better is, uh, that, that engagement, that feedback from the community.
Uh, last question is, and, and I gotta paraphrase this question a little bit because it's, I, I feel that a lot of times, no matter where in the country, when police departments do something, everybody on the other side of, of, the other side of the country gets thrown into it as an example, how, and, and I find it interesting to understand that police forces are different. Uh, the leadership's different and processes are different and, and all that. But it's, it's how do you deal with, for instance, uh, when you're talking about the Maldy shooting and, and, um, I guess they're saying that some of the findings were inaccurate and that leads to saying the police lied to the community and creates a negative, um, a, a negative impact. Uh, I don't even know how you do it. I mean, how do you, uh, how do, with, with something like that or something happens this, that's like, or like in, or in Chicago, anywhere? Um, how do you, do you brief? How do you deal with it? Do you look at what happens in other parts of the country and, 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 and try to use those as examples or, you know, something like that as far as, you know, things that impacts, that, that, you know, that impacts the police as a whole. It's a hard question to me because it's again, it's, it's, it's asking you to ask, to answer to something that's happening in Texas, but how do you deal with that, those situations?
Are you referring to the, the school shooting, uh, President Richardson?
Yes.
You definitely refer to, well.
Yeah, the, the question is in the school shooting, I guess the information that was given out, there was some initial information. And then, uh, it was about that, that wasn't absolutely the correct in, information. And then you have people that, that then will say, okay, now here's another example why we can't trust the police. Again, I don't know how you deal with that. So in general, do you keep tabs of different things that are happening across the country and do you use those as training opportunities?
Absolutely. You know, every, 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 um, situation that happens like that, um, the, is an opportunity for, for learning. It's a cha, it's an opportunity for you enhance your operations. And i- i- in, in their teachable moments, you know? Even when you go back to the George Floyd incident, they, they all represent teachable moments, uh, whatever that is, whether it's the appropriate level of force, uh, how do you, uh, present the information to the community? But in terms of when you're talking about how information changes, oftentimes those scenes are very dynamic. And, and there are certain, um, sometimes you, you may go to the scene and, and, you know, one of the things that, uh, we always try to indicate is that, uh, early on or the available information is telling us this. Because, you know, inevitably your investigators, uh, particularly if it's an officer involved shooting or, or some other horrific situation. Uh, when, when that press briefing is given out, it's normally early in the investigation, within the first hour or two, that information starts getting released. And sometimes some of your critical forensic and, and other types of investigators haven't arrived on the scene yet, or they have just arrived and begun that process of doing what they do or locating witnesses and those types of things. So those scenes are often very dynamic and that information that is given out is often very preliminary. But that has to be stated. So, you know, you have to manage that message, uh, when you are on those types of dynamic scenes uh, to the best of your ability. Uh, do those things happen? Certainly they do. Uh, but you, you try to manage that the best way that you can. Uh, in terms of, you know, for example, the situation in Texas, I, I think every police department and, and school police department in the country is looking at that situation. Um, you know, initially understanding that they're still investigating. There's still a, a psychological autopsy that's going to happen. They're still gathering information from that scene. So there's a lot of information that we don't know yet outside of what's been presented in the various media outlets and, and that type of, of, um, that type of thing. So, uh, just to make a long story short, uh, these situations always represent teachable moments. Uh, every agency normally will look at that, uh, you know, the, um, the, either the feds or DHS or DOJ or another acronym, or if it's a local situation, will have some type of outreach or hot wash or whatever you want to call it. So that we can, uh, see what were those lessons learned in that situation? Because we want to know the good, the bad and the ugly, so that if there are things that were done well, we certainly want to see what were those things that they did well that we may be able to replicate in, in our, in our situation? Or those things that weren't done the way they wished they would have been done, that we can sort of avoid those landmines as well.
Yeah, uh, Chief Garcia, I'm having, having responsibility for school, for schools and, and universities and that's, and, and you look at something like that, what's, what's, what is the, what is your type of reaction? How do, how do you, what do you say to your, your force, to your officers?
Yeah, well, I agree with Chief Blow. Every incident that occurs, unfortunately, we take that as lessons learned. We make every attempt to dissect it and ensure that we have appropriate information so that we know how we can change any tactic that we may, may need to use or technique. Uh, you know, prior to Columbine, for instance, the, the idea was the, you throw up a perimeter anyway for the SWAT team and all the rest of these folks. And since then, we've changed, uh, how we've done it. We, you know, we want to eliminate the threat. It immediately eliminated as immediate as possible. And so, yes, we learn from each one of these different events. Unfortunately, they continue to, uh, uh, occur. And apply that to, uh, what we do. We train quite heavily with Metro um, in their active assailant, uh, programs because they're our partner. If we were to have a critical incident take place, they're going to be the ones who are going to back us up as, as we move into those kinds of, uh, situations. And just to kind of address the issue and the conversation, the Q and A. You know, one of the issues that has taken place is the media, uh, uh, applies such a great deal of pressure to get answers. And many times the preliminary information that's provided is, uh, inaccurate. Um, it's incorrect. It may not be how it happened, but the media does play a huge role in these specific types of events.
That's great point, yeah. Man, I would, I, I, I'll ask this, uh, just a closing question. Well, it's a tough question, but do you think arming teachers is the answer?
No. Uh, and, and it tells you, President Richardson, I, I know that might not be the answer that some folks want to hear, but you know, the men and women in law enforcement, we go through hundreds of hours of training. Uh, there is a, as Captain Hank said, there's an intense screening process. Because when you have that firearm and we need to know that we have the best possible people we have out there, best minimum we could possibly get that have the capacity to make good life and death situations. And when you have that gun on your hip, you have to understand that now that gun, there is a gun available in that situation if it goes south, that gun that is on the hip of that instructor. Now, I know you may have some retired police officers, it's retired military, you know, I get that and we hear that all the time. But overall, the amount of training and retraining and, and de-escalation training and all the other training that goes into, um, making sure that that person that has the, that lethal weapon on their hip, if they have to go to it, we need to know that they understand, um, cover and concealment. They understand that if you, if you shoot at certain, in certain situation, you have to consider, all right, I may get the bad guy, but I may get three or four other children in the process. You know, there's a lot that goes on, uh, in, you know, in the psyche, um, in terms of accuracy, in terms of, there's just a lot of things that go on. And, and we want to make sure that when that weapon comes out of the holster in that situation, that the best trained person that we know is behind that weapon. And I'm just going to leave it there.
But if I may, uh, uh, President Gentry, uh, the, the earlier question, um, if I could revisit that, um, we have dealt with situations like that previously, reference, um, uh, I fell victim to that as the, um, Office of Over, Oversight, uh, Captain. Uh, we try to get the information as quick as possible, as accurate as possible to the media. And we, when we push that information out, that we're trying to be as transparent as possible. Uh, unfortunately, sometimes the physical evidence doesn't, the, the officer may say in his debrief that, where we, the initial debrief, that X Y Z and X Y Z happened. When we look at the physical evidence, it doesn't add up. Why? Because that person has just been through a traumatic experience. And what they initially thought occurred did not occur. Um, and that's been proven by fore science and other, other people, but a lot smarter than me. Um, the second, uh, part of that is we, uh, that, and then I believe, uh, the, the chief, uh, mentioned this also, feeding the beast, the, the, the pressure from the media to get the information as fast as possible. And a lot of times, that's why we have the immediate press brief that we do out on the scene to push out as much information as possible. And we leave you with the caveat that this is, these are the preliminary details as we know them at this time. And this is an ongoing investigation. Because things change, things change and they change very quickly. Because once we get down to interviewing officers, interviewing witnesses, um, and looking at the physical evidence that's presented, we will be able to paint a more clear picture of what actually happened. And the situation that happened down in Evolve Day, I don't know the specifics of that, but I will tell you that there's a lot of chaotic events going on. And if you remember back when we had October one here, we, we had national press here. National press got pretty nasty with our sheriff. And our sheriff had to basically tell them, hey, look, we're giving you the information that we have that is factual. We do not want to go down this road where we're having to retract your information. We want it to be accurate. So therefore, that's why so much on the front is, is so limited because they're trying to be as accurate as possible. And they may have fall, they, they may, and I'm just only speculating, they may have fell victim to things that may appear at a certain way and it, and it, it did not, it, it was not that way when they did, when they further along the investigation. And that's sort of part of about arming teachers. Um, I've been a firearm instructor for over twenty-two years. I did twelve and a half years in the United States Marine Corps. I've heard people talk about, they've asked me, why don't you just shoot the gun out of his hand? Why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? And as Chief Blow, uh, indicated, you want that firearm in the, in the hands of someone that understands that you don't point a weapon at anything you're not prepared to destroy. You're aware of the part, target and its backdrop. You treat all firearms as if they were loaded. It takes us many hours. We go through eighty hours of ba, uh, forty hour basic block and a forty hour advance. And then we qualify every three months, we're qualifying with our, with our duty weapon and our rifles and our shotguns and our low lethal shotguns and our forty millimeters. All of those tactics are trained over and over and over and over again. Um, we've all been to school. Think of that Meek Mile teacher that has a bulldog attitude and they want to, they want to carry a gun. And ask yourself, would I really want that person to, to carry a gun? Now, they can carry a gun in their, in their, in their personal life all, all they want. That, 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 that's fine. But in there with all those kids, what we, we say in law enforcement, where there's one gun, there's two. All right. So now you're bringing a gun to, you're bringing, there's a gun in that classroom. And now you have a, we have, we've seen these situations where some teachers have been overpowered by students. So now a student overpowers a teacher, takes the firearm and then executes the teacher. Now what do we have? We have a homicide that was actually preventable by not introducing the weapon to that situation. Um, there are some situations where, you know, a firearm is, uh, is the answer. I do not believe putting firearms on teachers in classrooms, I don't think we're there yet. I think there's other means that we could take to mitigate this. Um, and it's going to, it's going to take some communication, it's going to take some hard conversations. But do believe that there's ways that we can mitigate and reduce the number of, um, these mass shootings and grave loss of life that we've experienced.
Okay, well, I, and, and you know what? I think we should make that a topic for the next one because I think, uh, uh, unfortunately, I think it'll still be something we're talking about. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to say, guys, thank, thank you, thank you so much for being, being a part of this. Uh, Captain Hank, uh, Chief Garcia, hopefully we'll see you, um, this is a, this is shameless, but hopefully we'll see you June fourth at our gala. Um, uh, and, and, and Deputy Chief Blow.
He will be there, sir, I promise you.
Oh, I know you'll be there. I know. Hey, hey, there's no question, I know.
Uh, the question is, will anybody else from here?
And, and we, and we put our table right next to Metro's table.
Yes, we will. So, so, hey, guys, I, I, and, and, and I'll tell you, uh, this is a pleasure working with you guys. I, I've learned so much from you guys and so much that I could, that I can share in the community. And, uh, uh, I, I just, I just, I, I, again, it's, it's humanizing the officers and know that these are men and women too, with some of the same challenges we have. And, uh, uh, I appreciate you guys doing these, doing these types of sessions. And we look forward to doing it again in the next few months. So again, thank you. And, and guys, have a great Memorial Day holiday and, uh, try, try, uh, try not to eat too much. Um, but then maybe again, we've all learned it. So anyway, take care. And again, to the participants, thank you very much. And, uh, we will be doing this again. And, and, uh, there is a survey that we have out there, so please take the survey because that helps us as far as how we can, uh, um, ask different questions. And we're going to strive to have these, these, uh, these same, same gentleman on and to get the, uh, Police Chief of North Las Vegas on, uh, so we can really have that full coverage. That's what we're looking forward to. Again, so thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Yeah.
Good night.
Have a safe holiday.
All right. Thanks. Bye.
Mega strong.
All right.
Me.
All right.
Take care, Carlos.
Take care, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right.